You're on.
You're on. You have to open the meeting.
Oh, all right, make a motion to open the work session, please.
I'll make a motion and we open the work session.
Have a second?
I have a second.
On favor?
Aye.
So move.
B, just do a roll call and we'll get busy.
Roll call, B.
Mr. Delaporte?
Here.
Mr. Lawrenceini?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
Mr. DiNardo?
Here.
Mr. Dela.
Here.
Okay, so tonight is really just to give you an overview of your duties, some legal aspects. Of course, I'm open for questions at any time. There's a lot of booklets I've given you. I'm not going through all of them. Most of them are redundant from one to the other. But in the first book, I did take two pages that I would like to go to, and the first one is zoning board of appeals. It's page one.
Yeah, over here.
Yeah, and that one, did I know?
You're talking about this one, right?
Yeah.
There's nothing tabbed.
Okay, so I'm just going to read something to you that I underscored.
Sure.
That it's going to be a theme throughout the entire night. An area variance shall mean the authorization by the zoning board of appeals for the use of land in a matter which is not allowed by the dimensional or physical requirements of the applicable zoning regulations. What that basically means is I have a zoning book. Every building permit that comes through the town, I see first. I'm very black and white. You need 20 feet, you need 50 feet, whatever it is, and if it doesn't meet that, I deny it. And then your job, as you know, to look at area variances, and as you've seen tonight, they can't meet it. That's the only way you're going to see somebody is they didn't meet it. I try to ask people to, can you move it? You know, because it's a cost to coming here. It's a time cost, especially in the summer with pools and sheds. But some people are very adamant that's where it works in their yard for them, and that's why they're here. On the next page, it says, and the town board has asked me to really push this home. Each member of the board of appeals shall complete at a minimum four hours of training each year designed to enable such members to more effectively carry out their duties. So tonight will count for one hour. If in a year you get six, you can carry two. So if you see a day class, take it, because then you're almost done with the next year. There are classes online. We send stuff out all the time. Duchess County Planning offers classes. They're up at Millbrook. Once in a while, they're on Zoom. Pace Law School offers them. There's many, many ways to get your classes in. If you go online, you can find them. Just let me know what the class is, and I'll probably say it's applicable, and you need the four hours. And once you take them, you just need to let me know what you've taken so that she can put it towards you. The rest of this book, basically, you can go through on your own. The next booklet is zoning board of appeals, and again, a lot of it is reiterated. But on page 19, it talks about the minimum variance necessary. You have to remember that just because somebody wants it tucked in the corner doesn't mean you have to give it to them. And technically, you shouldn't if there are options. So here it says, "The statute codifies what courts have previously held. When granting either a use or an area variance, a zoning board of appeals must grant the minimum variance that it deems necessary and adequate." They go down another sentence. Thus, the board need not grant to the applicant everything he or she has asked for. Rather, the board is required to grant only the approval that is absolutely necessary to afford relief." And I say this because variance is run with the land. So when you let someone put the shed in the corner or the pool, forevermore, when that disintegrates, somebody can keep replacing it there. And we really need to look at the detriment to the neighbors when they come out, especially if they come out. Like, I understand people want things. I want things. You all have yards, you want things. But sometimes, we have to think, how is that affecting the people in proximity?
Well, we have too in the past, you know, stipulated that if it does disintegrate, that anything new would have to meet current zoning.
Right.
Right? You've done that in the past.
Yes. And so, and you can do conditions, but remember, are the conditions really affording the neighbors their quality of life? You know, putting up a fence is great, but it doesn't stop noise, and they're still on top of them sometimes, or the shed overhangs. You have to use your good discretion, but if you have a bastardized piece of property, like this last one, it's a third of an acre. When you go out there, they're all like that. They're tiny little houses in tiny little pieces. They're on top of each other. And they do, they should get some enjoyment if they want to make the house a little bigger. And that's what your job is, to say, well, you have no property, so we have to give you relief. But if someone has an acre, and they just want to tuck it off in the corner because they don't want to look at it, but everybody else has to look at it, you have to think to yourself, is that really our job? So the other thing that's critically important, and you all have these cards, because I've asked. So whenever you do a decision to keep it binding and legal, you have to go over these four criteria. If you don't, it kind of falls flat on the vote. So on page 32, in the bottom right-hand corner, however the board arrives at its decision, the decision itself must be supported by the findings which constitute substantial evidence. In other words, findings of fact or testimony must be placed on the record which adequately support the decision. It is no exaggeration to say that everything a board appeals decides is a potential lawsuit. Board of appeal actions are one of the most litigated fields of law. So I was reading through this, and I'm going to give you an example. You have to put more on the record. So if you're going to give someone, say, a garage that's 1,500 square feet, and they shouldn't have gone more than 800, give your reasons. Maybe that one has a third of an acre, and they can't get, they can't get what they need, and their septic field is in the back, and the property drops off on the right. Because by giving that variance, it's very specific to that property. And so, like, when you had one thrown back at you last time, if you make each one very specific to the property, especially if it's huge, if it's a very substantial, it's very substantial, there should be a reason why you feel that they should have it, so that every other property can't point to you and go, you've given it to everybody.
All right.
You gave it to that one, but do you have the same reasons?
Because.
Right. So that's really important going forward.
Saves you a lot of explaining.
Well, it also is going to protect your decision in a court, in the Supreme Court. They're going to look that you follow the rules, opening, closing, roll calls. But the Supreme Court will not overturn your decision if they feel it was in good thought. So we've had some come back. So if you think about why they came back, it wasn't that they overturned your decision. They wanted you to look at it stronger. They wanted you to give reasons why you felt that person should have that variance, not just, okay, it doesn't change the neighborhood, yeah, it's substantial, but it's okay. That's fine, but then how do you tell someone else that I'm not giving you the same type of variance when the two properties were probably completely different?
Totally different, right.
So that's where, what, how you decide holds water.
Same place versa, right? If we deny something for the same reason, right?
Correct. And if you deny it, you have to give good thought. You know, so if somebody has an acre land, and they want their garage 10 feet from the front, and it's as big as the house, well, it's not like somebody else who has no land. You know, you're giving them reasons. You have room, you could move it back, you just don't want it. You know, to have someone say, I just don't want to look at it in my backyard, is not a good enough reason.
Right.
I bought it already. Well, that's your problem. Or you have a deposit, you can still buy it, but you might have to move it. So, and some things will cost them more to build it, but again, you shouldn't take that into consideration because that's going to be there forever, or something like it. So the next piece of paper is the area variance deep dive. They just did this at the county, and this was excellent. So it gives you examples of dimensional physical relief. It talks to you in the fifth slide of the balance test for five factors. Change of the neighborhood character or detriment to nearby properties. So it may not change the character, maybe everyone has a detached garage, but on this property, are they putting it so close to their neighbor that is a detriment to them? Alternates not requiring a variance. There are alternates many times when someone comes to you. They don't want them because they've decided where they want it. But if the variance is very large, and you can see clear that an alternate works, then maybe it's your job to tell them, we're denying it unless you have, you have alternates or alternative places to put it. Substantiability of the request, adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions. You don't see a lot of that with a pool or a shed, but there have been times where there are environmental conditions. Some properties have streams on them, wetlands, buffers. So in that case, you would want to take that into consideration. And the alleged difficulty being self-created. That's probably the only one that in most cases is self-created unless, like this gentleman that was here, and I'm just using it as an example regardless of how you vote, if that garage was there, he didn't create it. But it is his difficulty.
Right.
I'm going to just stop with area variances for a minute. I didn't do a lot with use variances because it's very involved, and use variances, we should have an attorney for. In the 23 years I'm here, you've only granted, this board has only granted four. They should be that difficult because you are literally changing the zoning on a piece of property forever outside of the confines of the zone it's in. So that should have an incredibly hard look in those you have to get their, they have to show a financial hardship. So it gets really in the weeds there, you know, where you're having someone's finances opened up to you. So that's the kind of thing. If we get another one, I would have an attorney here just to help you through that. So I'm not going to really go into it, they're so far and few between. This goes on to the balance test. All factors must be weighed, but all factors do not have to be satisfied. The applicant's benefit versus the neighborhood or community, health, safety, and welfare. And they should provide evidence in the record that all the factors were individually weighed as well as you. You know, it's not, it is within your purview to ask them for more information, like you do with a survey, having something else marked out. It really helps that you go out to the property. If you go out and you need changes, you can adjourn a public hearing if you want more information. You don't have to render the decision. The decision has 62-day timetable, only if you close the public hearing. Okay? I'm not going to go through all of them because you can read them, a lot of it, you've been doing this for a long time. I think Donald, a lot of this is pretty clear, and again, just go through them. But I'm looking at number 10. Are there alternatives not requiring a variance, which I just spoke to? Applicants should prevent reasons for choosing one alternative over another. Better view, avoids adverse impacts, better internal layout, better overall aesthetics. So I think it's within your purview to ask people what their rationale was, and have they asked for, you know, have they looked at other alternatives?
I think we do. Yeah. I think we do.
Yeah, I think we do.
So I have one question, before we go any further.
Sure.
These reasons and explanations that we should be giving, maybe you're saying more of, I don't know, I'm not saying that.
You have to be more specific to the property. You have to make them about that property.
Right.
So.
When is that? Because when we typically go through and read a grant, a granting or denial of a variance, we use the five steps.
Right.
But there's really, I don't know, I don't think we do much.
You're still using the five steps.
I often don't.
But we types them all the time. They're pretty vanilla. They're pretty much like, well, I don't, you know, you go through them, I don't see an adverse effect, it won't really cause a change in the neighborhood.
Right, right.
But what they're saying is it should be more specific to that property.
During that?
At, when those, in the granting or denying of a variance.
Got you.
So I'm going to make up a property. You might say, I want the area. You might say whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible. We were out at the property.
Okay.
They, it's very wooded and hilly on one spot, and then their septic is in the middle, and the pool will only fit to the right side, and that's why we feel, I feel whoever's motioning it, that this is the best spot. Is it an undesirable change in the neighborhood character or detriment to nearby properties? You could say, in this particular case, the house is far away from it on the next-door property, and the back is all wooded, or something. But you're making it specific to that property, so the next one that comes in can't say, you gave me that, you gave my neighbor that. Because maybe their property is totally clear and flat.
Yeah.
Whether it's substantial, you have to really go. It is substantial, but due to the fact of whatever the situation is. And you make it, you tailor it to each variance, and that will stop a lot of, well, you gave it to this one. Because your property may, you may have two acres, and you could put it anywhere, and that person lived in Indian Village, and they had a quarter of an acre, and there is no place without a variance in their back, their back door is 20 foot deep. Where would you put a shed without a variance? So you pull those kinds of things out.
What would be, should we probably ask this question before? Could it be considered substantial, percent-wise?
Okay, so if you turn the page to three at the top.
Yeah.
They give you a substantiability of requests. So five feet on a 30-foot variance versus five feet of a 10-foot variance. So five feet, if you needed 30, isn't a lot, but five feet on a 10-foot variance is 50%.
Right.
So you, that's again, you got to go back to looking at the zone, the setback, and how big of a variance they need. You know, and then sometimes the hardship, short of knocking the house down, the one one of you referred to before on Schlichter, the house was there, short of cutting it in half, he had no other means. And that should be brought out, so that if someone just looks that up without seeing the paperwork and sees you gave the guy a one-foot variance to the property line, well, that wouldn't apply to almost any other property. But in his case, it wasn't a huge hardship, whether he created it, the person he bought it from. So that's where you get specific.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, and I think that the more difficult ones are the variances that we're looking at on existing structures.
Yeah, those are very hard.
Yeah. I mean, suppose, just, I may have been getting ahead of myself a little bit, but I mean, so has there ever been an instance like that, and, and the guy has, whether it's a shed or whether it's an addition even more so, right? And he's right on the property line in the variance, oh my gosh, it's huge. We tell him, you got, if we don't grant it, what's his option?
Well.
You taking it down?
I had the planning board one time tell them to take seven foot off a building.
Oh, really?
They made it bigger than what was approved. So, you know, we've had that. I think this, at least a few of you were here for somebody who built a shed that was, I think it was 20 foot deep, and it was like three or four feet from the side and three or four feet from the rear, and this board gave them the side variance, but made, you made them cut like seven or 10 feet off the rear. Remember that one?
Yeah, and it was a deck like that, too.
This way, the shed was still decent, but they pre-built it.
That deck that I built.
Yeah.
But it was right on the property line in the back. We made it take a couple feet off the deck.
Because as much as it's hard, and you do have a very hard job, as much as it's hard for you to say no, you have to remember that this variance is going to run forever, and that person will not always live there. When people go, well, I'm going to live here forever. No, no, you're not. I'm not going to be here forever. You're not going to live there forever. But three generations later, they're stuck with these decisions. And I think you just have to take that into consideration more, that their hardship really isn't your problem so much. You can give them relief, but to what extent? Maybe like you did with the other shed, she had to cut it off while she, she just is going to order it smaller. But in hindsight, you could have made her move it in then, it's smaller, five feet, and she wouldn't have needed a variance on it.
Right.
I'm just using that because it's a current example. A lot of times, you could get them to move it in more, or to make it smaller, you know. And I know people want what they want, but then they have to be willing to massage their own property to fit it, you know. And I think human nature is, nobody wants it right outside their back door, they want it here or there.
Right.
But the problem is the way, you have to look at how the property is built next to the neighbor. A property that goes out this way, that is going to be almost in front of their house because their property is being cut. So you have to kind of use your discretion when you look at it. We're not all rectangles. So that's the other thing to look at. Again, on page four, the 20-second slide there, again, talks about the granting the minimum variance necessary. The board of appeals in the granting of variances shall grant the minimum variance that it shall, that they shall deem necessary and adequate, and at the same time, preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the On the next page, the top 25 slide, question of precedent. You hear that a lot here, where people say you don't want to set a precedent.
Yeah.
So one thing that changes you setting a precedent is being more, more direct in your decision when you grant it, where you make it very, you're giving it to this person on this property for these reasons. This is the question of precedent. Often cited factors in case law, are area variances and development scenarios factually similar? Has evidence been presented substantiating factually similar cases? So just be careful of setting precedents. And if you're going to technically give a very large variance, then take it away from being a precedent by making it unique.
Yeah.
And then it's not a precedent, it's unique.
Yeah, I think it goes back to what you were just talking about before.
Right.
You have to be more specific to that property.
Right, right.
Then you're, you're kind of getting away from the precedent.
Right.
Due to the fact.
Right.
So this board granted about 15 years ago, a pool, a couple to have a pool in their front yard.
River Road.
Right. I won't say his last name, but his first name is William. And it was like, you're giving this guy a pool. But the guy who had, he, his property was pretty large. His backyard was not that great. The front was lifted, so if you drive by his house, you can't even tell there's a pool up there. So the elevation is so high. It did have beautiful river views, but it's not the same thing as if somebody came in on Spook Hill and wanted a pool in their front.
Well, there's the reason why, and if you stayed in the applicant.
Right. So in his application, his rear yard, it would have been so, he would have done so much grading and have to bring in fill. You could not see it, so it is not a detriment to the neighborhood. You know, there were, so that's how that one would play. So it's just looking at each property that way.
Detailed reasons.
So on page 35, 31, it says, area variances subdivisions. For all area variances related to a proposed subdivision, the ZBA must request a written recommendation from the planning board. Now, years ago, the planning board used to give recommendations, and a couple of ZBA members back 20 years ago kind of resented it. They felt that the planning board was telling them what to do. But in hindsight, the planning board is looking at a site plan, say Tractor Supply, because they came here, or a subdivision, like we've had a few, and they're looking at the meat and potatoes. They're looking at a long EAF, they're looking at all kinds of studies, and you're just getting a shortened KIPNO of a variance. So it probably behooves the planning board to give a recommendation for it, if they feel you should grant it or not, in some form, to give you some information of what this really means to this project. Is this something that looks like you should grant it, you know, and it's just a formality at the planning board, or it's something they might recommend that you do your own deep dive? But if you, if you just get a piece of paper with a variance, you really don't know what that entails.
Yeah.
You know, Tractor Supply could not get enough parking, so they asked to bank spaces, and they needed a variance for that.
That's why the planning board gets the big money.
I think sometimes they have the bigger headaches, but that's just my opinion.
Oh, of course.
Although you've had your own set of headaches.
Yeah.
Question on applications in the review section.
Where, where are you?
One page back. So, you know, I just glanced over that. You know, that's kind of speaking to, you know, the documentation that people give us, which I feel like has been lacking on a lot of applications. Is there any way, you know, I've talked about this before, that we can, you know, formalize our requirements for certain applications?
I'm looking to redo the variance application. Our variance application is light.
Yeah.
I've looked at a few other towns. Pleasant Valley wants their long information that, like, I don't even know why anybody would want it, and I don't think any typical resident could give you.
If we go online, can we find those applications?
Sure, you can go on any town, so I'm going to.
I mean, can we give you some more information for that? Just to give us ideas ourselves of what we might recommend.
Sure.
You know, for example, accessory apartments, you know, it, we always get to the public hearing, and we're like, it would be really nice to have the after plan, but it's almost too late to ask for it at that point.
No, because they haven't built it. Remember something, so let's just spend five minutes on an accessory apartment. This town does not allow two families. We have a few, they were built before zoning. This is a bedroom community of one family neighborhood. So what is an accessory apartment? Accessory apartment is a temporary apartment for your parent, or your child, or sibling, with the thought that they're not staying. So mom comes to live with you, and you want her to have a kitchenette so she can have a privacy, you've got six kids running around the house. But someday, mom's leaving, she's going to go to Florida. It's supposed to be created so that kitchen or kitchenette comes back out, and that becomes part of your house. So if you build it on, you have a new family room, or a great room, or a new whatever, pool table room. And the point is, you want to make those, those apartments so they can be turned back into a one-family house. There's a lot of money out, and people just want stuff, and we're getting a lot of people, as you've had two last year, that really want to build a second house, attach it in some form. That will never be able to be a one-family house again. So I would hope that in the future, when you look at an accessory apartment, your job is to look at it for what it is. How is this accessory to the house when it's the same size as the house? How can this be put in back into a one-family if it's not attached, or attached by a breezeway or a garage? So the main word is temporary. Temporary could be 30 years, if your mother's 60 and she lives till 90, God bless, and maybe you have a young son or daughter who's in her 20s, and you don't want them to really move away, you want to be able, them to live home, but independently to some degree, and you build an apartment, and maybe they get married and stay there for another five or six years until they start a family. And that's what we're doing in this country. We're trying to help our young people. But again, it's supposed to be temporary, so when they go to sell the house, it's not a two-family, or it's not an apartment where someone's going to use it to pay their mortgage. So I guess with that is, it causes a huge enforcement problem for us during the day. We find illegal apartments all the time. People have problems when they go to sell their house, and, and the brokers blatantly say, mother, daughter. It is an, is an application for the person who took it out. It's not transferable. It's not a given. So keep that in mind. The same way, you might get a variance for someone who wants to have a hair salon, and they have to go to the planning board for special use permit. And it's a permitted use with a special use permit, but it's not something, if your wife was a hairdresser, and I buy it, and I think, oh, well, I can use it because I do nails. No. It was for the hair salon. And when that lady decides to sell her house, it can't be sold with a business module. It goes back to whatever she moved around to make it a hair salon, it needs to be sold as a one-family. Now, if somebody wants to buy it and go, well, there's already a sink there and a bathroom, and I'm a nail tech, they have to come to the planning board and ask permission and to get their own special use permit. You know, sometimes there's a doctor's office. It's not just a given in a residential neighborhood that you can keep selling it and other people put what they like in it.
Isn't that written in the contract, or when the variance is granted?
It is in the special use permit.
Right.
There's also all this information, when you take an accessory apartment, one of the things that they have to do is, their lawyer has to write what we call a declaration of covenants. And in it, it spells out, I know I'm building this, and it can't stay, and then we make them file it with their deed and bring us back the receipt. So the attorney for a future buyer should see that that's not a legal entity. But Judy deals with this a lot. That and fifty cents doesn't mean we deal with this every week. You know, I had one woman giving one of our clerks a really hard time. Nobody told me, and, and she was very upset because it's holding up a sale. And I walked out of my office, as soon as, as soon as she saw me, her face fell. And I said, you look familiar. I said, let me get your accessory apartment contract, like, permit out. And I said, oh, I'm the one that helped you. And I was very, very clear that it couldn't stay. Oh, yeah, I remember that.
All of a sudden, it just came to me.
So, you know.
So, in terms of beefing up the requirements, you know, when people, you know, because I think it does have to happen before they even get to us, like, you know, some additional information should be submitted.
So, here's part of the problem. I get a permit, sometimes I only have what you say, and I deny it. And we have to beef up, that's the other part that I really am reading too. Our paperwork, my denial letter, says that you have sixty days to apply for a variance. Some of them sit next to B for a year, and then they decide to come in. Technically and legally, that's void. Their application's void, they've lost the money, it's a voided application. They could have come in and changed it, so they didn't need a variance and continued on. But you can't just let things linger. We can't have applications that have validity two years later just because they're sitting somewhere in a fold.
Sure, understandable.
Um, and then they fill it out, and that's where I think a stronger, more in-depth application is necessary. So, we had someone here today, there's a language barrier, and he hired somebody. Good move. Because as we could see, you want to help somebody with a language barrier, but it's not always easy. And we've had help sometimes from the audience to come up who speaks the other language. Very difficult. But remember, we're dealing with them in the office too. So, it's very hard to explain to somebody. So, tonight, I actually asked Bill, that gentleman, if you could take care of the mailings, or at least help him. And then Judy actually spoke to him out in the hallway. Because that's what we try to do, we try to hold everyone's hand and help them to a point. And this gentleman is gonna do this for him. So that it's done correctly for you, and he doesn't have problems on that end. So, yes, we can ask for more information to a point, like B doesn't know what else she'd need to get it ready to send to you. But maybe the new variance application will be more in-depth, but remember.
Which, just like even outlining when we need an actual official survey, you know, I think would be helpful.
Right, well, I try to get a new, so a survey is a survey is a survey. If, I don't like surveys.
Going up to date.
That have no house on it, because you have nowhere to measure from.
Yeah.
But a survey that's twenty years old is still a good survey. And keep in mind that sometimes surveys cost people fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars for a hot tub, you know, it's, it kind of, you can see the expense.
I mean, we've had several, you know, that, that one, where the guy told us a completely wrong side property line, right? Like, you know, things like that, we, we need a survey, and it would be good to ask.
So, you can ask for this. So, at the public hearing, because you've already gone to the site, is within your purview, what you're granting them is a big deal. I think a lot of the public thinks it's just, you just want more money and a permit. You're asking for relief of the code that's gonna run with the land forever.
Forever, right.
That's a big deal. So, if one or all of you feel there's not enough, it's within your purview, you say, Mr. or Mrs. so-and-so, I need a more, I need an updated line. How many times have I even said, do the line? You don't always have to pay for an entire survey. You can get a surveyor to survey the line for a couple hundred dollars.
Right.
You know. But if you want more, it, you're going to grant the decision. You can ask for more, don't be bashful if you feel you want more.
I mean, same goes for a stakeout too, sometimes. You know, if you want to see that property line stakeout, I mean, that, that's dollars, right? But sometimes you have to have it.
Well, for, for example, the zero, you know, variance we're looking at, I don't see how you can grant that without having a stakeout.
No, you definitely need a stakeout.
Or, you know, any variance over seventy-five percent, I feel like should inherently have to give us a survey, just because it is such a large variance and so close to property line. And I, we've all seen the people flush the numbers, I mean.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. You know, I know, so this is a funny little ditty in the office. When someone calls and says, what are my setbacks? It's really funny when you say twenty and forty, and then they have exactly twenty and forty.
How'd you know?
You know, maybe there's a little problem here. I would have been better if they said twenty-two and a half, like, by forty-three. I'd say, oh, wow, they have a surveyor, they measured it.
Right.
So, ten percent's a given, ten percent's really nothing. Twenty percent, okay, thirty percent, it should already be getting very difficult for you guys to grant it. When you start going over fifty percent, it has to be for a very good reason, and you're gonna have to base it. Because today, any of the neighbors can now do an Article seventy-eight. And of course, backing it, and you might have some that are seventy-five percent with really good reason, specific to that property.
Regarding what the. I think we mention that a lot of times. I think we do say, due to the property, due to the layout of the property, or due to the topography of the property. I think we do say that.
But not enough, and not clear enough.
Like, another example, like with some of the garages, we, we always ask for a, a plan showing the need.
Right.
It'd be great just to have them come in with that on day one, like, if we can have that in the, in the paperwork, because we're gonna see more.
And we can do that, you know, we can add anything. So, let's, I will definitely work on our variance. You guys, if you want to look at some, you know, we can take anything and make it ours, you know. We, I copied a lot, you know. We could take pieces of three different variances and make it ours.
What page are we on?
So, on the last page of this.
What'd you say?
On thirty-three, decisions and findings. Courts will, will not substitute their judgment for a board's if all the factors are considered and the decision is rationally supported by fact. So, that's what we've been talking about. So, that's really critical. They give a variance, a, a thing at the bottom, support the decision with clear rationale. The height variance to exceed the maximum allowable height by eight feet will not impact the neighboring properties. Potential impact to the adjoining neighbor's scenic views was analyzed, and the proposed dwelling will not impede the neighbor's view, and it goes on. Not this, the height variance will not impact neighboring properties. So, you see where I'm going with this. And today, people will sue easier, and people will stand their ground to protect their property from somebody else just wanting a lot. So, again, so, I didn't go through every panel, because some of them are very repetitive and, and pretty simple. I also gave you, which I'm going to have B start, we're gonna put this with the variance tax. It's guidelines for applicants who appeal to the zoning board of appeals. It really, when you read through it, and I'm not gonna read through the whole thing, it lets them know what they're up against. And on page three, I underlined environment, oh, this is a side thing. Forget that for right now, I'll get back to that. On the fifth page, it said, must the variance be granted, be exactly what was applied for? When you read that page, if you're the applicant, it lets them know, this is not a given, and that you're going to go through all these steps. So, if someone is filling this out and thinks it's a given, they might want to think twice about the money they're gonna spend if they have a lot of other options. SECR, I'm going to go over SECR, and it's the last thing that you have. And it, I gave you the SECR chart. Area variances are a type-two action. In SECR, there's type-one, type-two, and unlisted. Ninety percent of what you do is type-two, so there's no EAF. We used to do that, and the attorney said, why are you making people fill them out? And the answer is, no, 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 which is kind of silly, but we made them do it. So, I'm not gonna go through SECR on this. It's really more of a planning board, town board issue, really mostly planning board. And you have, like, a subdivision is usually a type-one. Certain things are unlisted, but you wouldn't have that unless it's a use variance. And it would depend on the use variance, so there isn't one example, because it would really change. But area variances are type-two. And I gave you the SECR handbook for anyone who would like to read more about SECR.
Is this the handbook, Barbara?
Each spare turn.
Yes.
Those nights when you can't fall asleep.
Come on, guys, this is so much fun. So, back in the, and then just talking about SECR, on page three, for anyone who's, this is to the applicant. This is the one with the applicant, like, what an applicant needs to know. It's guidelines for applicants to the zoning board of appeals. On page three, it goes over an EIS if it's required, and an environmental review is not necessary for interpretations of the zoning regulations or for area variances relating to setbacks, lot lines, or for area variances related to one, two, or three family residences. So, that's just SECR in a nutshell. So, you're very lucky, we don't have to do SECR when in EAF. I gave you sign regulations. Sign regulations kind of are, is a moving target, depending on the town. Every town has their own sign regulations. You don't get a lot of sign variances anymore. But I gave you this just in case. Signs at the planning board, they have the authority to waive the setback and the height. And in most cases, they'll take care of it, unless it's huge. Then they don't want to touch it, they'll send it to you and let you guys deal with it. So, I'm not gonna go through signs heavily.
Yeah.
We worked on this. This I gave you, I worked on this with the planner last year, it's going live. So, when someone gets a building permit, and they get this page that we say, it's a plot plan, and there's a square in the middle. Most people have no idea what we want. So, they'll draw a shaky little square for their shed. And even though it says we need the setbacks, what does that mean to somebody? So, we designed this for R-15, which is like one-third of an acre. R-20, half acre, and R-40. And it shows them, we're gonna add it to all the building permits for accessory structures or pools, so that they can see what we mean. They can look at their property and see what we mean by setbacks. This may stop some people from just going, I'm gonna put it in the corner. And then they come in, and they go, you can't put it in the corner. I'm like, what do you mean? They'll know ahead of time, oh, while they're looking at it, they'll say, well, wait, there are setbacks in our zone, and we have to obey them. And maybe in their planning process, they'll find a better place for it. Because they'll already know that's a problem for them.
Yeah, that's good.
So, I've added that.
Yeah, and had it off before we even get it.
It was, yeah, I worked on this with, I said, why can't we have something that explains to somebody, like with pictures? Because, and I've told everybody this, but before I worked here, I went to put an addition on, and the zoning administrator in my town came, and at the end of her, you know, rolling, walking around, she goes, wow, you need eleven variances. And I'm like, what's a variance? I mean, I was that person. And she said, da-da-da-da-da, and I was like, what does that mean? I have to explain that to Mr. Roberti, and I don't know what you mean, so I can't really explain it. And is that bad? And she proceeded to break it down. I said, look, I'm not dumb, but I don't know, I, you know.
You don't know what you don't know.
I, I wanted a shed at the store, and we put it together. I wanted a pool online, and we put it together. I said, what do you mean? And I never forget that, that when people come in, they don't know what we want, a lot of people. So, we have to make it as clear as possible. So, it makes it easier for the resident, and it makes it a lot easier for the building department, because now they don't have to be like I was, like, trying to explain to someone at the window, you need a setback. So, hopefully, that will start helping. And then the last book that I gave you is about public hearings and public meetings. I think we do a fine job posting everything, having public hearings. Again, in case of lawsuits, the main thing is protocol. Opening a meeting, having the person come up, explain, you know, talking about it, having them say their name, make a motion to open the public hearing. Making sure we offer the public the opportunity to speak and reiterate, is there anyone else? And then you close it properly, and then you make your decision or hold it over. So, we do a really good job with that. The last thing I just want to go over is executive sessions.
Good question on the meetings.
Sure.
Is it to our benefit to discuss amongst ourselves more, basically, you know, us five, about each application? You know, we'll often ask questions, but we don't always, you know, discuss back and forth.
I hear what you're saying. So, first of all, let me just cover one thing, just in case. You cannot talk with more than, with three or more of you about a project outside of here. That is against the open meeting laws, and if it ever gets found, you can get sued. You can talk together, but you can't make a quorum. So, when you go out to site visits, you can be, one of you can be asking the applicant questions, but then you can't walk out to your cars and legally discuss it. You have to wait till you come back here.
As a group of five, we can't go to our cars and discuss it, right?
Any of three or more.
Right.
Three is a quorum, that's immediately, and that would be violating the open meeting.
But I mean, if Tom and I step off to the side and talk about it in five minutes.
That's fine. I don't, I haven't done it, that's not a problem. But you're just having a conversation about it, but it's not breaking the open meeting law. So, when you're having it, I think it would behoove you to have more discussion, whether it's direct, like Tom, not Tom, David to an applicant. But you can even, because it's, you can talk about anything. You can just say, you know, this garage is very big, do they, you know, I'm hearing a bathroom, and, you know, before you notice, it sounds like somebody's gonna live in it. Like, you can talk about that right in front of the department.
Yeah, or have a conversation here in front of them.
Because if it sounds a little odd, you should be talking about it. Because more often than not, you, you probably all have a lot of the same issues.
You mean like the attic?
Yes, or, you know what I'm saying? It's like, you really have to, and listen to what people are saying. When they want all these things, is it really for what they say they want it for? Like, if you pay attention, sometimes it's like, you're talking about it having feathers, and you're talking that it's a duck, but it's actually a pelican. You need to ask more questions. And you can talk amongst yourselves there, the planning board does this all the time.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we could maybe do more of that, and I feel like we do.
So, we should all be on the same page, and if you have questions, ask them, I agree.
Like, let's just say, David, you have a problem with it. It's like, I just think this is too big. Does anybody else feel it's too big? And John might go, well, you know, I'm thinking the same thing. I, I don't see myself approving this, it's just massive, it's as big as their house. You can do that, but you're doing it in front of the person. You're not doing it behind their back.
So, we could have that ban to retweet it.
Yeah, so the planning board does it. But you're doing it openly, so that it's not a secret. You know, and the person might say, well, wait a second, I know it's bigger than my house, but blah, blah, blah. But then you're at least giving them the opportunity for a rebuttal, because they hear what you're saying.
We can't go into executive session.
Well, let's talk about executive session. You can't go in to just discuss something. Like, tonight, you couldn't go into executive session for attorney advice, because I'm not an attorney, although I act like that on TV. But you need, it has to be for legal advice. I can't give you legal advice. So, only with your attorney can you go in. And there's very specific things you can go in for legal advice. So, there's a list, and I'm sorry that I don't have it, but I will forward it to you. I think it's like ten items, and probably eight of them doesn't, won't even apply to your board. You know, they apply to other venues. But if you feel, when we have an attorney, that there are issues that you want to discuss with them, then we can. Now, we don't always have an attorney for more simple projects. So, if you, after going to a site, feel that this is more than meets the eye, and you want some legal advice, you can tell me, and I will have an attorney present. You know, a lot of times I say to the attorney, you don't have to come. I don't see the cost factor for simple things that I can help you with. But if it's something I feel is of legal nature, whether I think I know it or not is immaterial, then you need to have an attorney here to help you. Okay? Questions?
You know, one comment I would like to make, I've made this before. It kind of tags on to what Dave was saying. I don't, not only do the drawings not sometimes make any sense, but the scribbling that some of the people do on these applications, that.
The handwriting is a problem.
The handwriting.
Is a problem. So, to maybe confront that, I'm going, when we get a variance, and we're gonna do it very, within the next two months, a variance application, I can have Tom Bar make it.
The media.
The media, they can type it in and then print it. Because we've had people bring things to be in pencil, it'll look like disappearing pencil, because you could barely read it. Handwriting sometimes is no fault of their own, that's their handwriting, but if you can't read it, that's a problem.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, we're like, well, once we schedule the site meeting, you know, there's momentum almost to the process, right? Like, I feel like it is difficult to, to go back and get some of that missing information. You know, we almost settle and make do, and measure ourselves on site, and, and do our best, but like, it would be.
Well, you could keep notes at the meeting.
Yeah, it would be good to almost even not even schedule a site meeting Yeah, it would be good to almost even not even schedule a site meeting until we have the complete package, you know. We're almost too nice sometimes, I feel like.
So a pool, a small shed, but if someone's building a big garage or an addition, you're within your purview to ask them for profiles. They'll have to hire somebody, but that's their issue.
What is that?
Well, for instance, Paul Pelon, he's an architect. If you wanted a profile, like to see what the, what it would look like from a distance or the side, you know, it's hard to kind of visualize a twenty-two-foot, twenty-by-thirty building on that line. But you can have them do a profile. They'd have to hire somebody, an engineer or an architect. They can actually on a CAD machine put it there and they can give you what it will look like.
Okay. Well, like, for example, with some of the garages, I feel like when we do get those, sometimes someone just comes in with, they're just showing us a box. They're like, yeah, I'll figure out the size later, you know, I'll figure out the way it's going to look.
It doesn't work like that.
You know, and like for those cases, I personally think we should say, no, like the aesthetics of it do matter, that's.
You can do that. You say, we're going to, we're not going, excuse me, make a decision. We're going to adjourn this for two months and longer if necessary, but you're going to have to get us architectural.
Hard numbers because it's forever.
But I would want that before it even gets to us. Like, I think that should be on the list of required items.
Okay.
You know, you have to give us the material, you have to give us the color, you have to give us the elevation, you have to give us the actual plans.
So we'd have to have a baseline because you, I think it would be a major hardship for the actual resident if it's something small.
It's like a small shed, yeah. Like, I think we have to set the threshold after which you would need to.
Right, so if it's over, well, yeah.
Yeah, a certain amount of square feet or something like that.
True.
Yeah, because that's real dollars, you know.
A certain amount of property, right? I mean, you know, because if the property goes up, the square footage goes up, so.
I mean, I think we'd find, you know, thresholds after which, you know, they should kick in.
It's all.
If it, if it, if they need you to give them a variance, they've outdone their threshold on their size property. So I think that that's a good way to look at it. And if they don't want to do that, then they'll have to either reduce the size or move it somewhere they don't need your decision. But you'd have more to work on.
Yeah, no, I agree, but I, there's got to be some, some, like you said, baseline or bar where, like, say somebody comes in for a shed, you know, and they ask them to do elevations or something like that, it's going to cost them twice as much as it is the shed, you know.
I mean, if someone's asking you, you know, one foot for like a deck or something, it's like, okay, it's like, we can figure that out.
Well, a lot of sheds are pre-built, like gray woodwork, they, they give you, they can give you what it looks like. You're actually picking from a picture to pick it out.
You are.
Yeah.
I mean, like two garages ago, you know, we asked a guy for elevation, he's like, they don't give, they don't have them, you know. The supplier can't give it to me. It's like, well, you have no idea what it's going to look like. He's just like, oh, look residential, you know, like, that's like such an ambiguous statement.
Right.
Yeah.
And more and more people are starting to get like, will be like, well, I think you need this, and they'll say, well, let's see if they'll accept it. I mean, and just say no.
Well, as kids, they're throwing at the wall and, you know.
Right, and this isn't, and so let me leave you with this. This isn't let's make a deal. And your answer is either yes or no. You can ask in the discussion before you go out, would you consider making it smaller? But we've had some people where they've been here five times and it's becoming almost an exercise in wills. Where you're going, well, can you move it a little? No. Well, and they keep coming back and forth, well, I can't. And I think a lot of people feel they'll just stand their ground and you'll break down and give it to them. And if you're really not inclined to give it to them, then you shouldn't. And if you feel it's something you can, you feel it's okay, then you will. But I think what Judy's saying is true. Some people go, well, I bet you they'll give it to me, you know, and why should I look to move it? But maybe their property that they could move it in four places and they just want it there. So again, it's your decision, we just want your decisions to be better made and tighter.
And I came back to home and played, you moved it over two feet?
That's the thing, I think, I think they want to just.
Heat and they go out or something.
Try it and you guys should say no, and then they'll realize, you know, they do have other options.
They have to come back and pay again though, right, for that?
If you say no, yeah.
Yeah, it starts over.
Are they aware of that?
But we've tried, we've tried to work it out with these people. We've tried to, you know, tell them, if you just do this, it's probably a sure thing, no. Okay, then when you come here, we go, no. Right? I mean, it's happened.
You are, I mean, if you, if it's tough, I'll use your job because you're vocal. So you could, no, but in a good way, if you, if you said, I'm just telling you, Mr. Smith, because you're in the discussion phase, this is huge. I don't see myself agreeing to this. And if somebody else then speaks up and says, John, I agree with you, this is way too big. And then Pete, you're the chairman, you could say, Mr. Smith, as you can see, we haven't voted yet, but this doesn't look like it's going to go well for you. Do you want to come back and think about maybe reducing this? Say the person wants a sixteen-hundred-foot garage, they're allowed eight. So two of you kind of, you haven't voted, we don't just draw polls, I had a guy ask about that, no. We're not giving you a hint. But you, but in a sense, you could by saying, there's no way I can vote for this. I know where this is. And if somebody else kind of backs you and says, this is very big, I would have a hard time. I mean, I have to look at it, but you let somebody know, do you want to come back in two weeks and think about this? So they haven't gotten a no, but you, most people can see that coming.
Get adjourned, yeah.
And then if they come back and go, which I don't want to name certain places that did, and they just said, nope, that's what we want and we're willing to let you vote. Well, if you really weren't comfortable, then you're going to say no.
I was surprised at the last meeting.
Yeah, we've done it a few times.
Approved.
I'm sorry, what?
I was surprised at the last meeting what was approved up here, because there were some big variances there.
There are some big, but again, there's got to be valid reasons why, either way.
I only had a problem with telling the guy he could build his garage if he put a big fence on it. At the end, I mean, that was at the end of the, how do you just do that? How do you just throw that in there at the last minute? Oh, yeah, now build a big fence between your, your house and his house. I felt that absolutely wrong to do to that guy and I felt that we should have adjourned that case and had this guy come back with us with an actual, yes, this is how I want to put the fence to block the next zoning review or something like that. I mean, throwing it at him at the last second of a meeting, and then I think it makes a burden for you guys, right, to try and go out and enforce it?
It does.
Does it not? So, I mean, and we got to think of that too when we're sitting up here. You know, somebody's got to go look at this and somebody's got to go deal with these people.
Because we have a code and the code is black and white and it says what it says. And then if they don't like that, they come to get their, you know, relief. But everything that happens now comes back because when, when we walked in here, I was like, that property slopes. So if somebody wants to stage their fence, there could be now how high, how far off the ground, what's really blocking. So I, and it goes back to what you were saying, stating clearly what you express and what you want will solve because this is already potentially a neighbor dispute anyway, so I don't want to add much to the fire.
Exactly. It was a neighborhood dispute.
You know, like Bushes, a lot of times they'll say to you, how tall do you want them? So there's always a reason why things change.
Well, I mean, with sort of the screen elements, I agree, we should adjourn and they should come back with their proposal.
Right.
I think it's always better to.
Especially if we're going to throw it at them at the last minute, you know, as, oh, well, we're thinking about giving it to you, but we want this.
And I can tell you from this place and the planning board, people will agree to anything to get the approval.
Right.
We had that with a group just recently at the planning board and we, oh, we asked them to put sidewalks in. So the engineer walked back to the couple and talked to them, and he comes back, he says, no problem. They just want their approval. Well, after they agreed to it and they realized sidewalks were going to cost them over a hundred grand, they're like, you mean the town's going to put them in? We're like, where did you get that you were asked? So they claimed that they misunderstood their engineer. And now, instead of being able to go forward, they had to come back to the planning board and it took them another three months. Where if they would have just spent another two weeks waiting so everybody could regroup, the engineer could put it on, give them a cost factor, they could have had a solid approval in two weeks. Instead, they had to come back, back and forth with the planning board to where we finally got easements from them, should we ever need the sidewalk, because at this point, it is a sidewalk to nowhere. But sometime, you got to put them in so that they all do connect.
Especially the fence, the plans that were presented were pretty well-done as far as plans go for that structure, that garage. I don't think there would have been trouble coming back with a new plan with what the fence would look like.
And it's way at this level.
Well, I mean, he should come back with the fence and with an actual grading plan because that garage is shifting.
Yeah.
He has a grading plan.
And I think we could ask him.
It's not.
At this point, it's a sign.
It's that drawing, it looks flat to me, that's why I ask, can you sneak, you know.
What's the business out by Nissan?
What is the business where?
Out by Nissan, how come they don't have a sign?
They have one out by the road, I just saw it. I gave the sign permits two months ago. It's Plimpton Hills, it's a kitchen and bath showroom and plumbing. They finally put it by the road, we're still waiting for them to put it on their pay show.
I mean, certainly back, like, any major change that we're requesting from them that I think does impact site plan or the structure, we should just adjourn and they should.
I think we got to give them time, I really do.
Same with that last accessory apartment, we should have adjourned that and you should come back with new plans. Where you just cut the one half of the wall, whatever ridiculous artifact trick you did.
You're talking about Al.
Yeah, like they should come back.
And even a tree, Al should have been redressed that night. When he turned around and said, what do you want them to live in a hovel with less than fifteen-hundred square feet? I'm like.
I live in a hovel.
Half of the town's homes aren't that big.
Mine is a lovely hovel.
It was like, really? So.
And I think those people, like, I think people are benefiting by your conversations, by somebody saying, no, I don't think, and somebody saying, well, wait a minute, what if, I think them hearing that.
It's also showing a rationale to them.
Yeah, other than if there's nothing said, it's almost like.
It's just yes or no.
When you're talking and people hear that dialogue, it really does make everybody that's watching kind of go, okay, it's not just a slam dunk, I have to go think about this. And we can then say, the building department, no, you guys have to be prepared on these things.
They're not, they don't just give them out like candy, you're going to work for it.
Yeah.
Or find a better spot.
And then I have enforcement, let's get enforcement issues, because I know as I.
All right, so I'm going to get you the reasons you can go into executive session. I apologize for not having them tonight. I'll email that to you. And do you have any other questions?
I have it in front of me.
Yeah.
In the firehouse, I have it in front of me, reasons to go into executive session.
So how do we officially end this?
I would just motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
No favor?
Aye.
Be it, thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Bea, Judy.
And in the future, if anybody has gone on a site or has a question, you can just email me.